Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the April 4th, 2016 regular meeting of the Milford Board of Aldermen. Please join me as we salute our flag.
Alderman Anderson.
Present.
Alderman Beatty.
Here.
Alderman Bevan.
Here.
Alderman Beer.
Here.
Alderman Casey.
Here.
Alderman Gorman.
Here.
Alderman Genotasio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardeman.
Here.
Alderman Shaw.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Veccharelli.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
Fifteen present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative functions of the Board of Aldermen. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Residents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time. The Board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements, or to engage in personal attacks against any individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anybody wishing to address the board can stand up to the podium now.
Good evening, Board members. My name is June O'Connell. I live at 102 East Rutland Road. I'm asking for the status of the city's foreclosure case against the Wheeler's Woods property. As you may know, I brought to the attention of the Planning and Zoning Board that the owner and developer owe over $381,000 in back taxes. That doesn't even count 2015 taxes. In light of the fact Wheeler's Woods is now in default for failure to plead, I feel that they should, the city should be moving for a default judgment and asking the court for transfer of title to the city as soon as possible. The Wheeler's Woods 830G appeal was moved up from October 25th to June 6th, 2016. It appears to me that they want to get through the court before anything is done on the foreclosure case. That is why the city needs to move on this as soon as possible. The city could even buy the property with open space grant money. It would be a win-win situation for the city. It would stop this 830G development without the city appearing to be against 830Gs. It would save the taxpayers lots of money fighting their appeal in court. It would support the Planning and Zoning Board's decision to deny this development for health and safety reasons. It would show the honest taxpayers of Milford that those who don't pay their taxes are not going to be carried by those who do pay taxes. And one possible use for this property could be a small walking trail with a couple of benches and call it the Claude Coffin Nature Park. Claude Coffin lived just up the street, and he donated over 4,000 Indian artifacts to Milford Historical Society and found some of his best pieces of Indian pottery on this property. In the Economic Development Council in the city of Milford, they're looking to put signage on I-95 for his exhibits here in Milford, and I believe that was just passed. So that would be one possible use. But I want to thank you very much for your time and consideration, and I have enclosed, I made copies for everybody so that it could be put on record, and I attached the city of Milford's tax statement for your review. And I think every taxpayer in Milford is watching to see what happens with this case. Thank you.
This past Saturday, the city of Milford made the front page of the New Haven Register again regarding the marijuana dispensaries and the nine out of 17 applications that are being processed through the state for our city. What's most disturbing to me about, two things most disturbing to me about this article. One, Milford is embarrassed again by the way, I'm sorry, Mayor Blake, your administration handled this. And number two, what's even more concerning is that back in October, six months ago, the Milford Prevention Council presented the Blake administration with zoning verbiage from other towns who have been dealing with this issue, and it appears in six months, nothing was done with this. I'd like this board to ask, what happened in these intervening six months? That is, again, putting Milford on the front page of the New Haven Register, putting us behind the eight ball, and being the beta test site for nine out of the 17 medical marijuana dispensary sites. This isn't an issue of whether you support the medical marijuana dispensaries or not. It's an issue of why would, why should Milford, much like other towns in Connecticut, want to be the town that gets, that has all the sites for this and the experimental town for what's going on with the dispensaries? It's too new an issue. I don't think Milford should be, should be the guinea pig for this. We had the opportunity last October when the Milford Prevention Council, a great group, brought this to the administration. What, what didn't happen in the past six months? I'd appreciate it if your board could look into that.
Michelle Kramer, 104 West River Street. I wanted to address a few problems that have come to my attention, speaking tonight on behalf of Milford Preservation Trust about the demolition permit process, and I made copies. Should I distribute them right now? As you know, the Milford Preservation Trust, the Milford Historical Society, and the city historian all received notices of intent to demolish. So when several residents on Gulf Street called to report orange spray paint with the word demolition across the front and sides of 215 Gulf Street, I went through my papers thinking that perhaps I had misplaced the notification. I, this is the stack that has come to the trust in the last two weeks. So every time one comes in, I get in my car and go and look at the property. As it turns out, I went over to the building department, and they had not received anything either. Now, I don't know about how you feel, but if I wake up one morning and see the orange paint on the front and side of a house saying demolition, and there's a bulldozer in the driveway, to me, that says imminent demolition, and it also speaks to the inevitability of demolition. And that is a concern because in this case, 215 Gulf, there's some, there's some disagreement about the age of the house. Some folks think that it dates to 1860. It may be later, but in fact, it's possible that the city historian would invoke the demolition delay ordinance. Now, as you know, the purpose of a demolition delay ordinance is to find a reasonable and prudent alternative to demolition. This generally means trying to find a potential buyer who's interested in historic properties. Orange paint on the house and a bulldozer on the site does not really imply that a feasible alternative can be achieved. In addition, while looking over the application for a permit to authorize demolition, which I got at the building department, and it looks like this, it states that within 14 days of filing an application, a sign measuring at least 24 by 36 must be posted in a conspicuous location on the property. This provides public notice. It's supposed to be the actual permit posted. They are serving as, as public notice, intent to demolish. This is not being done. It's rarely done. I drive around, I have not been seeing this. Also, the application reads that for designated structures, that is, properties for which the demolition delay has been invoked, it states here, and this is the one I just got last week, "There shall be a 90-day waiting period unless waived by the city historian." Well, in fact, in March of 2015, the Board of Aldermen amended the waiting period from 90 days to 120 days, you will recall. But one year later, that's not reflected in this, in this permit. I actually offered to go over and hand correct them all, but I'm sure we can find another, another solution. And finally, not all of the notices of intent to demolish that MPT receives are being sent by certified mail, which is also required. Now, the Milford Preservation Trust is addressing the Board of Aldermen as there is no public speaking at planning and zoning meetings, but we intend to follow up with a letter to the building department, the city planner, and the land use office to let them know about these concerns because it seems to me that the orange paint has now become sort of like the accepted way to go about it, and that is really putting the cart or the bulldozer before the horse. So we wanted to get that on public record. Thank you.
My name is Michael O'Connell. I live at 102 East Rutland Road. My wife was the first person to speak here tonight and asked the board to have the city proceed as quickly as possible to foreclose on the property which the city has filed for foreclosure. They have a golden opportunity to do this at this point. There is a lot of question as to the problems on this property. If anybody followed planning and zoning hearings, you're well aware of a lot of the questions that were brought up at planning and zoning. And we have a unique opportunity, which we may never get again, to take this property right here and now. They have made no attempt to pay their taxes since 2011, and there's nobody in this room that would own their house today had they not paid their taxes since 2011. Thank you.
Hi. Paul DePrato, 166 East Rutland Road. I just live down the road from these folks here. And really, all I wanted to do was just get on the record as well to support June and her husband in regards to foreclosing on the, on the, on the property where Wheeler's Woods. It seems odd that we do have this gift given to us, right? Where the zoning board, you know, declined it, and we have this opportunity before it goes to court to actually foreclose on the property, and I think that we should act accordingly and do it quickly. Thank you.
Richard Platt, 132 Platt Lane. Actually, two things that I've come up here to speak to you about. I would like to speak in support of the Wheeler's Farms people here saying, yes, for heaven's sakes, if this property is that much in arrears, let's foreclose and get it. And putting a nature trail, naming it after Claude Coffin is a great idea. As a matter of fact, in thinking about this property, occurred to me that there's one further serious defect in the Affordable Housing Statute that a developer can put a development on a historic site, and you can't stop them. So in, in addition to health and safety, we also need to put historic as a possible protection for a property. Now, getting around to the demolition delay, as Ms. Kramer has pointed out, the way in which this ordinance has been carried out has been quite sloppy in the past. As a matter of fact, for quite a while, while I was historian, I would just get a phone call from a demolition contractor, say, hey, I'd like to demolish the house at such and such an address, and I, I'm scheduled to do this by next Thursday or whatever. I'm saying, hey, wait a minute. You're supposed to let me know in writing and all that, you know? And I go and look anyway. I always went and looked, and most of the time, there was no sign. And the sign, by the way, has to have a copy of the application for demolition, and apparently even in the building inspector's office, they were telling him, oh, just call a historian, and he'll take care of it. And it took me quite a while to get the point across to these people, hey, it has to be in writing. As a matter of fact, your ordinance says by certified mail. I didn't care, care whether it was certified mail or not. I just wanted to get it in writing so there would be a paper trail. So I hope we're getting around to getting things tightened up and having your ordinances carried out the way they're supposed to be. So in any case, and as far as the, the orange paint, I was quite shocked when I saw that, and that became, became sort of the, the custom. It seemed rather sloppy, and again, a rather easy way for the demolition contractor to take care of it. He didn't have to go through all the trouble of writing a letter and mailing it to me or the other people. Just slap orange paint on the place. I find now that this is a fairly common thing in other places as well, so okay, I'll go along with that, but I still insist that we carry out our ordinance by putting the sign with the copy of the application on it. And of course, we let the, and maybe there's a lack of communication, I don't know, that nobody bothered to tell the building inspector that's 100, that it's 120 days instead of 90. I don't know what happened there, but, so anyway, as I say, we've got to tighten things up. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to adjust the board at this time? Seeing none, Alderman Veccharelli, agenda item number three.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen held on March 7th, 2016.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number four, there was no special meeting. Agenda item number five, Chairman's Report. Seeing that this is the month of May, which is the month that we honor our mothers, have Mother's Day, just like to say very happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there, and I hope that everybody gives their, what?
It's April. Do you like Mother's Day?
Oh, yeah, this is, this is April. Hey, April fools. Sorry about that. Wow. Somehow it lasted a month. Must've been the snow. Thank you for the adjustment. Agenda item number six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everybody is staying warm this spring. Today, April 4th, we've had snow and an ice storm. Nobody appreciates that when warm weather is supposed to be coming soon. There's a couple of issues that were addressed during the public comment. One of the issues involved a tax issue on Wheeler's Farms Road. Please know that the city attorney's office is handling a tax foreclosure. It's underway. It's going through the process. Pleadings are being filed as timely as they can be, and that should be resolved. Certainly, the taxes will be paid. Another issue that was brought up was 255 West River Street and a marijuana dispensary that has been proposed for that site. Please know that there was, I think everybody in the city of Milford, or the vast majority of people, recognize that there are good benefits for people that are suffering from some terrible diseases like cancer and MS and glaucoma and Parkinson's for which this medication would help, but I think everybody also agrees that if this program is going to be successful, it needs to be in appropriate locations. Like any business in the city of Milford, it needs to be in the appropriate locations. A residential area similar to what we have for West River Street is not appropriate. It's too close to schools. It's too close to churches. It's too close to childcare, daycare facilities. I've called on the Department of Consumer Protection to again look at the application. On Friday, they took down previously posted regulations. If you look at the regulations that they put up, they were revised as of March 2016, so they did a quick switcheroo, and it seems like they're backtracking on some regulations that they had previously posted, the only regulations that they had posted, but we're still digging into that issue. There was a speaker that mentioned about October of 2015, the Milford Prevention Council had presented to the Regulation Subcommittee of the Planning and Zoning Board a proposed change in the regulations. The Regulation Subcommittee, that is, the appropriate vehicle to change regulations of the Planning and Zoning Board, has not acted. We are, in conjunction, the city of Milford, in conjunction with the Milford Prevention Council tomorrow night at the Planning and Zoning Board are taking, and I know Alderman Vitale is, is on the Milford Prevention Council, but are taking a proposed set of regulations and presenting them tomorrow night to the Planning and Zoning Board. There will be a hearing to address those tightening up of the restrictions. As brief background, back when the state enabling legislation was passed, I think in 2013, 2013, the city of Milford, through our city attorney's office and the mayor's office, offered a moratorium, which was adopted by the Planning and Zoning Board. After that, approximately a year after that, when the moratorium ran or sunset, the Planning and Zoning Board, through the Regulation Subcommittee, proposed new and adopted new regulations that were not, at least in my opinion, strict enough. So we are enhancing those, increasing those, those restrictions. That's a little bit of background to some of the two issues that were mentioned. I do know that it's a short agenda. I do know that there's a national championship basketball game on this evening, so I don't want to be too, too long-winded, but it is a relatively short agenda, but I do request respectfully your consideration and action on those items, 8A through 8C, as well as, I'd like to call your attention to an appointment under 6A, which is itemized in your agenda. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to ask me or ask members of the panel sitting next to me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair. Alderman Vitale.
Could I just ask the mayor a question as to what he discussed, he just brought up, please?
Once again, I'm sorry.
Could I, I'd like to address the mayor as to what he had indicated with, when a couple of things he has said.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, we know this, this dispensary is going to be a juggernaut. The fact remains that, you know, way back when you indicated the Milford Prevention Council had come into one of the meetings with some, with some P&amp;Z regulations that were, would put a kibosh on, and knowing and looking at it in the future, would, would put a hold on what was going on with the drug-free, the drug, drug dispensaries. The drug-free zone was 1,000 feet, but the P&amp;Z decided to reduce that to 300 feet. Why they did it, I can't understand, and with all of the regulations in the surrounding towns that we, as P&amp;MPC had indicated, would work better for us, were completely ignored, it was voted on. And I got up, one of, at one of the meetings when that individual who owns that 255 West River Street, and specifically said, you're, the only reason why you're here is because of our zoning regulations. And he got up and he said, and he said, you're absolutely right. You're absolutely right, the reason why we're here. We had 17 applications, and nine of them came from Milford that they had to be signed off. They had to be signed off with somebody we know, somebody in Milford, and none of this was picked up at that particular point in time. It really, it really is undefensible as to now we have two, and we're going to have two dispensaries in Milford. I think, you know, it was, was a poor decision, was a poor decision to change the footage from 1,000 drug feet in the drug-free zone to 300, and now we're going into all of this, in this debacle, another debacle that we have to deal with. Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Vitale, I agree with you 100%. Again, it's like President Obama wanting to try to get a nominee for the Supreme Court past Mitch McConnell. He can't do it. He could leave the, the horse to water, but he can't make him drink. I'm of the same mindset. I would have liked that the Subcommittee for Regulation Review adopted more strict ones, but again, that's your political party, not mine, that controls that committee. And if we could change things into the past, I would, I would have done that, but that wasn't the case.
Whatever political party they're wrong, and whether it's a Republican or Democrat, it's about people, it's about kids, and it's about our community and what's best for our community. So give away the, the political stance here. It's what's, what's best for our community, and my, my party knows that.
And we're singing off the same song sheet.
Opening under Agenda Item Number Seven, there is no unfinished business. Opening under Agenda Item Number Eight, moving on to new business, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the appointment of James Trowbridge, 18 Otterbon Close, as a member of the Ethics Commission to fill the present vacancy, three-year term expiring 12/31/18.
Motion is bade and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, is he there tonight? Yes, yes, he is. Newly confirmed commission member, come to the front of the auditorium to get sworn in by our city clerk.
For you, and we can just take a moment to sign the sheet after you're sworn in. Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear sincerely affirm that you will uphold your duties and responsibilities as a member of the Ethics Commission for the city of Milford, so help your God, under the pain or penalty for perjury or false statement?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request to enter in to the attached lease between the Davis Holding Company and the city of Milford for the purpose of a law enforcement firearms training system.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Casey.
Yes, through you to the, to the mayor, just as a brief background, is this like a, a shooting range that's, that's being leased out?
Mr. Ms. Alderman Casey, I will invite up our deputy chief, Ken Ron. It's a facility that I have not been to, but the deputy chief has, and he is obviously an area expert, so I'll let him give a little bit of background, at least the background that he's able to present to the board.
Sure. Good evening. This is a facility that we've had an agreement with the, the property owners down, the Beard property, for a number of years, close to 30 years, I believe. It allows us to have an, an existing site out there that we were able to build through state-obtained funds.
Captain, could you please raise the microphone a little bit so we could hear you better? Thank you.
We've had this agreement for a number of years with the Beard property. It allowed, we've, through state and grant funding, we were able to install a shoot house on the, the property out there. By entering into the lease, it allows us to, it allows us to insulate the, the property there. It insulates the Beard property so, for liability purposes, and it gives us the ability to, to manage the people that have access to the, the site there.
Just a brief follow-up. Is it used for any other purpose, or is it just solely used for firearms training?
It's, it's for firearms training, and it, but it's also used for entry-type - shootings, mass casualty shootings, you know, anything of that nature.
Thank you.
Just, just to supplement that, Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Casey, this facility, if you want to call it that, the shoot house, that's actually what it's called, was acquired through a emergency management homeland security grant back in 2009, 2010. Mr. Beard, who was the principal at Davis Holding Company, allowed the police to sit it there. It's a regional asset. A couple of years ago, this, not this board, but the Board of Aldermen approved other towns. As part of being a regional grant, we have to let other municipal law enforcement agencies, the state police, and active military use the site as a regional asset. I was approached by Mr. Beard a couple of years ago, saying, you know, "I've let you use the land, but I, my insurance agent wants me to get some insurance on this." And I said, "You don't have any?" Because it came on before I came. And I said, "Sure, we will do that. We drafted the lease." He gets the benefit of the insurance, which our insurance company is fine with. We get the benefit of controlling who has access. Before, if Mr. Beard told a friend, "Go down there and take a look and gander," they could go, but per this lease, it's only allowed, the police are the only people that can decide who goes down there.
Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Through you to the City Attorney, how much money are we talking on the lease, please?
The lease is, is not dollars out. It was free, but he did ask for some compensation, the police department, tight budget. So what, we negotiated through the tax assessor was a reduction, a slight reduction, as of the 2016 revale. It's, it's about $300 a month. It's, it's $3,700 a year that the property will be reduced in its value and its assessment.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Attorney Bertram. So Mr. Beard is the one that prompted this lease for insurance purposes? Is that what I'm hearing? Is that correct?
It's my understanding that he approached my predecessor several times and not gotten any feedback, and really, because it's, it's a heavy shoot house, it's concrete, no roof, we didn't really want to move it. And, but he said he wanted insurance. We drafted the language of the lease.
And as far as the tax incentive that you just mentioned, is that most recent, or does that go back to when the shoot house was started?
No, it, it will begin going forward. He's not asking for anything in arrears.
Okay, so moving forward.
Moving forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Bevan.
Is this being used right now by city police?
Yes.
Is there any gate system that will keep riffraff like myself from not going out there and shooting?
We just installed a gate system out there with a code for that purpose, not specifically for you, but for, for that purpose.
Any more questions for the chief? Saying thank you, chief. All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item 8C.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the request for the attached grant program for distracted driving, high-visibility enforcement, and to authorize the Mayor, the Police Chief, and the Finance Director to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said grant.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through, to Ken, if you can answer a question for me, Deputy Chief. I know these grants become very, very specific in nature, and this seems to be very specific with handheld devices. But my concern, and it's always been my, a boggle in my mind here, is that when, not only do people, do people text and use handheld devices, but they also have dogs in their laps. When things like these things are being seen, are they being, are these people being held accountable when they get pulled over, or do they get pulled over for dogs in their laps and other destructive things that may distract the driving?
I don't have the specific wording of the statute in front of me. The major onus of the statute, I know initially was for the handheld, hands-free devices. There is a caveat, a kind of a catchall at the end of it, that has to do with engaging in any conduct other than the operation of a motor vehicle, which causes the operator to be distracted at the time. So it is, you know, there are multiple things that could fall under that, under, under that section of the statute. So there are a lot of different things that people can engage in while they're driving that would constitute that and can be enforced. You know, enforcement is always a component too of discretion of the officer, how they want to address it via, via warning, via written warning, or via, you know, a fraction.
But my point would be that something like that is a distraction, and it would be, it would be addressed by the, the officer, so it's not only for these particular laser-like focus on the, on the, on the handheld devices, but it can be other distractions also in the car?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more, excuse me, any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Bevan.
Thank you to the chief. Could you tell me what the proposed amount of, the fine would be for, for this?
For, for the offense, if someone is charged with it? I believe the, it's a tiered infraction setup. I believe the first offense is $150. The secondary subsequent offense would be 300, and it could go for the third offense as high as 500.
Thank you very much.
Alderman Grant.
Thank you to the chief. I noticed that this goes into effect today, so could you provide some information on how this is going to be enforced throughout April?
It will go into effect tomorrow. There are some specific criteria as to how they want us to go about the enforcement of it. I don't want to go into too many details as to the operation of, the actual operation of the procedure. There's a manner in which they wanted to enforce it. They asked for us to select areas throughout the city, to look at them, and to find areas that have either had a high incidence of accidents, where we know there's a large volume of traffic going through. There's, there's periods during the, the day that we have to abide by, that they want an AM period and an afternoon period to hit both ends of rush hour. And there are some, you know, some logistic components that they would like us to adhere to for this particular operation, that I'd rather not talk about in a, in a public forum.
Thank you.
Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Captain Ron. Good evening.
Good evening.
Chief, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Chief, can you just help me understand, is this going to require this grant, because you happened to mention the fact that they want us to, or they want the department to focus on specific times of the day, and specific areas, and things along those lines? Is it going to require any overtime from the police department?
The way the grant is set is to, I believe the cap is 40,000 if you're approved on the grant, and it's a 75%, 25% reimbursement on any overtime expenditures that go out of that. So we would be reimbursed for up to 75% of what we paid out. The remaining 25% could be overtime incurred by the city. There's an additional parameter set up within the statute that allows for a percentage of the fines incurred to go back to the municipality, to try to offset that match 25%.
So we should expect overtime, and along with that, with realizing the fines, it's going to help supplement that?
It can, it can help supplement that.
It could. And we received this grant last year, I believe. We had the same, similar grant?
Yes, sir.
And was that the case last year? Did it work out to?
I don't have any specific numbers with me as to the, outlay from last year's grant, but, you know, I believe, you know, we had the 75%, 75%, 25% offset. I don't have the numbers as to, as to what was generated from the fines, though.
Okay. And this is going to run April, and then again in August?
Yes, we have to commit to April and then again in August, which are usually peak times that we, as, as an agency, like to be out there conducting meaningful and effective enforcement, just to kind of establish a tone for the summer months when it gets really, you know, populated through downtown, the beach areas, that the thoroughfare through the city.
And I understand that it's going to be noticed publicly? People are going to be made aware of the fact that there's going to be enforcement?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Vitale.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, through our finance advisor, yeah, department. Regarding the collected fines, do we have a record of the fines in your office?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, Alderman Vitale, yes. These, all of these fines flow through the city's general fund revenue.
Can you tell us how it offset it, of that 25%? Did it offset it? Was it applied toward that expense that the city would take on?
I don't have the exact numbers with me, but we do know that the 75% received was primarily to cover overtime, and then any of the 25% of the fines would be in the general fund to help offset any overtime that remained in the general fund or regular wages.
Because it does state here, the city funds, that $8,700, approximately $8,700 will be taken out of city funds. So again, we don't know. Can we get that number from you? How much the fine, what the fines were, that were incurred, and as, to get some idea of what the collections were?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes. I can look at last year's numbers and get that information to you.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Alderman Ginatasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to the chief. Chief, I'm just curious, interested to know, really, are we, are, is this grant optional? Do we need to apply for this grant?
This is something that we were selected through the state to, an opportunity to apply for it. We are, you know, regionally, we're well-respected with what we do, and we, we offer a lot of opportunities to impact overall the safety of the highways throughout Milford, and because we're a thoroughfare for, for multiple other jurisdictions, you know, it's kind of, it, because it's the ability to set the tone for other agencies. And these are numbers too, that it's not specifically all overtime, because what we try to do, we try to, when we, when we engage in an activity like this, we try to make sure that we have some sort of staffing. So there are times that we will hire people on overtime, there are times if we have a shift that is, is full enough, that we will pull an officer or two from the shift, so it's not occurring overtime.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Alderman Bevan.
Through you to the chief. I see that we get 25% on the, on the ticket. Do we get any money if, if a, if a police officer pulls someone over for texting and he gets a ticket? Does the city see any of that money, or does it all go to the state?
I think that's, what we just discussed was that it is, that, that portion of it can go to the general fund for the city.
I'm talking outside. I'm going to say, this is for April and August. What about two months ago? Would the city receive any of the money off of that ticket, or would it all go to the state?
That, I'm not sure.
Okay. Good enough. Mr. Mayor, would you?
Mr. Chair, through, through you, can you repeat the question one more time?
The question is, if, if a ticket was given out a month ago for the same thing, would the city get any of the money off of that ticket, or does it all go to the state?
It's my understanding that the city does not get a proportional amount back, but I'll confirm that, except for this, under this grant program. But I'll, I'll confirm that.
I understand this. From now on, we'd get 25% for the, for April and August. I was curious about other times, if this is one of those items where our police are giving tickets out in the city, and the city isn't receiving any money off of those tickets. Thank you.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, chief, for answering all those questions.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Agenda Item Number 9, "There Is No New Business." Opening under Agenda Item Number 10, "There Is No Budget Memo Transfers." Moving on to refunds, Alderman Veccharelli, Agenda Item Number 11A.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consideration of the budget memo, I'm sorry, of the consideration of the refunds in the amount of $18,390.32.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 12, reports of standing committees. Are there any reports, any committee reports? Alderman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to indicate to members that the Public Works Committee will be touring the Winter's Brothers facility on a revised date Tuesday, April 26th, at 2:30 in the afternoon. And for those who are interested in carpooling, meeting at Public Works at 1:30, hope that you can attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 13, any reports from any special committees? Seeing none. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 14, the next item on the agenda is executive session. I will entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss 14A, consideration of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Milford and United Public Employees Union, Local 434, Unit 96, Milford Public Works employees. Joining us in executive session for Items 14A will be the Mayor, the City Attorney, the Assistant City Attorney, the Human Resources Director, and the Public Works Director. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor? Opposed? We're now in executive session. Alderman Veccharelli, we are, we are out of executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city to approve consideration of collective bargaining agreement between the City of Milford and the United Public Employees Union, Local 434, Unit 96, Milford Public Works employees.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Just want to make a note before we adjourn, this coming Thursday at 7 o'clock is our public hearing, beginning of our budget session, 7 o'clock here at City Hall. Did everyone hear that?
Yes.
7 o'clock this Thursday night for our public hearing, beginning of the budget season. Okay. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.